I'd like to call to order the December 13th, 2022 Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM. God, do you need to you kind of roll call please?
Mr. Berardi. Okay, Mrs. Depp.
Here.
Mrs. Lala.
Here.
Mr. Mazano.
Here.
Mr. Monson. Okay, Mr. Palazzo.
I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Trabuzio.
Here.
Alright, thank you for having us, members. Please stand to the floor. Sure. The mission of North School District is inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment. Thank you. Celebration of success time. We'd like to do this off.
So I wanted to share that our, we recently had a annual coin drive at both Lee and Giles schools, and collectively raised over forty-six hundred dollars. So I wanted to share that out. The Giles Prime Leaders also met at the local Target store and filled over six carts of toys, clothing items, gift cards, personal care items, to fulfill the needs of about fifty local children. And in addition to that, they were able to purchase over sixty Target gift cards to have additional donations to, uh, to share. So I thought that was a really feel-good moment. They wanted to make sure we celebrate that tonight.
Very good. Thanks for sharing.
And at Giles, we're celebrating four-hundred-and-twenty-six. And that's all I'm gonna say. I'm gonna leave it as a cliffhanger, and I'll talk more about it.
December is Special Education Month. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, was signed on December 2nd in 1975 by President Ford. So this month, we recognize Mr. Masters and the Special Education Department, and all of the work that they do for our students, and assuring that our students of district may be received an appropriate and challenging curriculum. So thank you very much, Mr. Masters and your department.
Yes, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you for sharing that. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. I'd like to call to order a public hearing regarding North School District 2022 levy. Yeah, can I roll call?
Mrs. Depp.
Here.
Mrs. Lala.
Here.
Mr. Mazano.
Here.
Mr. Palazzo.
Here.
Mr. Trabuzio.
Here.
Public hearing regarding North School District 2022 levy. Fill in the law requires that a public hearing be required to meet the action. Adoption of the truth in taxation law. The public hearing is not a dialogue or question-and-answer session between the board and the audience. It is a time when the public can present information and express opinions. The board's role is to listen intently to all comments presented by the public, and then consider those comments from the board liberates on the adoption of the levy.
I'll just take a couple of minutes and review the levy for this year. And according to the truth in taxation law, any levy that is five percent greater must go through a process of public notice and public hearing. This year, the levy is just a T that under eight percent in total. And that is because the CPI is five percent. So that automatically means for us to capture that five percent, we would have to do the truth in taxation. We expect about point three in new growth and construction. So the actual number that we're expecting, even though we levy eight, just to be safe, is five point three. And basically, that five point three percent should be divided equally across all taxpayers and so forth. The exception being that there has been some movement in the assessors' office for this last year going forward to basically give businesses more breaks and less to residential taxpayers. That happened in the city. If that happens in the suburbs going forward, that would shift some of the tax burden to residential taxpayers, just so you're aware of that. A new part of this law is that we are also supposed to provide fund balances as part of the public hearing. Someone let Kimmy talk about this.
So if you look at the card column, you'll see those are fund balances adds of six thirty twenty-two that we got from our draft AFR from the auditors. So if you look at what our board policy are, we are very healthy in our fund balances. We're meeting our board policy. And then if you look, that end of the next column shows adds of eleven thirty. So that includes both of the transfers made from working cash to ed and the transfer from working cash to debt service and from working cash to IMRS and social security. And because our fund balances were healthy and we're meeting what we need to be, we've been able to borrow from ourselves and not have to go outside and borrow and get interest and have to make payments. We've been able to take care of ourselves for about almost five months now. It's through the end of November and like even we're like halfway through December. We've been taking care of ourselves. We did start to get some tax money in just the other day, not much, but it's starting to come in.
And the only thing I would add to that was, then you'll see later on agenda that we're doing another borrowing because we need to, if the taxes don't come in, we need to have sufficient taxes to pay the bills that you're approaching tonight and the second payroll in December. And so that will take care of that. The only other comment I'm gonna have on the tax levy in general is that it's very similar to the ones we've done the last year or two. The, we're still adjusting our IMRF and social security tax levies to reflect corrections from audit a couple, two or three years ago, where we just need more money in social security and less in IMRF. But other than that, everything's pretty much the same as last year.
Yeah, comments for the board? Correct, Kimmy, ready? Okay, we will now adjourn the public hearing. Our action item, we're gonna table sixteen peps and Frank. District has not received the audit, only AFR, and word as of yet. With that being said, I ask the board to consider the approval of the agenda as now modified. Any discussion, questions? Alright, I ask for the motion to approve the agenda as now modified. Motion.
Say it.
Lou, Frank, do you need to roll call?
Mr. Mazano.
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio.
Yes.
Mrs. Lala.
Yes.
Mrs. Depp.
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo.
Yes. Carried, thank you.
I'd like to welcome everybody again to the meeting. Correspondents, there is no correspondence to report this month. Any public participation? Mr. Pia, none? Okay. For your request, the district has received two since the last meeting. First one being Gerardo Mendez requested on November the 11th of this year, the 2022 plumbing and water pipe replacement at Giles and Lee Elementary Schools. Please request copies of the bid tabulations. For your request number two is Bo Ken, who requested on November the 12th, 2022. Bid results, tabulations for 11, November 8th, 2022 Giles School District 8, 2022 plumbing and water pipe replacement at Giles and Lee Elementary Schools in Cookhoney, project number being two-one-zero-nine-one-point-zero-zero. Again, those will be posted on their website and for public view, in the absence of transparency. Mr. Beckett, presentation Giles School.
Well, thank you, everyone. So we're very excited to share this information with all of you. We worked very hard at Giles School promoting a positive atmosphere. So we talk about words like being what it means to be positive, respectful, responsible, inclusive, determined, engaged. We talk about what it means to be Giles made all the time. And when I have meetings with parents, they will always tell me that being Giles made is a discussion that is occurring at home as well as it is taking place here in school. And that really makes me happy because I want those conversations because we need the support at home as well as here at school. So I really applaud, the four-hundred-and-twenty-six that I said for celebration is part of this data that we're gonna go over. So there's four main topics. We're gonna talk about the twenty-one, twenty-two data. We're gonna talk about the twenty-two, twenty-three, this year's data. Talk about some statistics, and then we're gonna talk about behavior improvement plan. So this is last year's data, trimester one. We're only talking trimester one. When you, when you get your mastery connected at home, you'll see the green, the yellow, and the red. The two, the one, the zero. Two means mastery, one means development, and zero means beginning. Because each student is evaluated on their SCL standards as well. And that means being, having a positive attitude behavior and so on. So as you can see, the breakdown across the board, overall last year, eighty percent of our population had received zero referrals. Majors were minors. And fifteen percent had received three to eight or one major. And then the red, five percent, which has twenty-six students, seventy-two stu-, as you see the yellow, was seventy-two students, received nine plus minors and majors. We work very closely, in fact, Mrs. Aarons works very closely with our students that are the fifteen percent and that five percent. So that's the twenty-one, twenty-two data. Here's the twenty-two, twenty-three data. This is based off of four-hundred-and-ninety-four students. So we have four-hundred-and-twenty-six students this trimester that received zero referrals. That's eighty-six percent of our student population. Then we had forty-nine students, ten percent of our population, that were developing. And then we have nineteen students, four percent of our population, that are beginning. And we're gonna break it up even more. So here's a side-by-side comparison, so you can see last year's overall, this year's overall. You can also see by the grade. But one thing that we're gonna pay a little more attention to is the breakdown from the class of 2023, which is last year's seventh grade for this year's eighth grade. As I said, four-hundred-and-twenty-six, that's that celebration number. We recently, on Monday, with the support of the PTA, the PTA funded an assembly, a motivational speaker, Courtney the Dribbler, who used to be playing for the Harlem Globetrotters. He came and gave a motivational speech to all of our students, which, and we heard a lot of positive feedback from our students. They really enjoyed the presentation. And then after that presentation, we were able to celebrate this number, four-hundred-and-twenty-six. Each student that received zero referrals, four-hundred-and-twenty-six of them, all received a certificate, congratulating them on their great accomplishment for trimester one. Breaking it up into the pyramid, it shows you our eighty-six, our ten, our four percent. And then here's what I was talking about, the class of 2023, our data deep dive. As seventh graders, seventy percent or eighty-nine students had zero to no referrals. This year, a hundred and seven students, seventy-eight percent of the eighth grade, this year's eighth grade, received zero referrals. And what I would like to think is that through the hard work of our staff, we made a huge change. And I said it the last day of school, when the kids were in the gym and we got an assembly. Things are gonna be different next year. And I didn't give them any more information. I let them think about it the whole summer. We came in this year, signs plastered on the wall, hot spot training. We spent two weeks walking down the hallway, lighting up their classrooms, how to behave in bathrooms, how to behave in the hallway, how to behave in the lunchroom. Expectations were re-taught and re-taught and re-taught. And that's what we did for two weeks in the center of the school, was to reteach these expectations. I did tell at the last faculty meeting to the staff, we're gonna do the same thing. We're not gonna spend two weeks, but we are gonna dedicate time when we come back from the winter break, and we're gonna reteach the students the expectations again, so that our data is as great as it is right now for trimester two. So looking at it, at developing for one, twelve percent, sixteen students received a yellow, three to eight minors, one major. And then fourteen students of eighth graders received ten percent. Now, if we go back one slide, we'll see that nineteen students were zero. Now, if we go forward again, we'll see fourteen of them are eighth graders. So what we're doing is we're dedicating our resources through our social work, our psychologist, Mrs. Aarons, myself. We're working with these students, identifying concerns and trying to support them, working with families and parents, so that we can support them. And our goal is to prepare them so that they can be successful in our building, but also be successful when they go on to high school and into their life. Overall, sorry, overall, here's the numbers again, with our overall percentage, which is really great numbers. We're really proud of that. And then I'm gonna turn our statistics over to Mrs. Aarons, who's gonna speak about that.
So here's a list of what we can receive a minor for at Giles. There's sixteen behaviors you can receive a minor for. The top minor referrals this trimester were food and gum, disruptive behavior, not following directions, missing supplies unprepared, and Chromebook violations. And we've been working with all of the staff to make sure that we're consistent. If you walk into seventh grade math, you're going to receive a minor for the same reason you would receive it in eighth grade. Yeah, so having staff be consistent with upholding the expectations. And here's just a side-by-side. We're a hair away with food and gum and disruptive behavior being the most common minor, with the others following suit.
If I could step in, when we break in that data, this data that twenty-four point eighty-eight percent of food, gum violations, which, you know, in the whole scheme of things, we're talking food and gum. So I'm okay with that, right? I don't want disruptive behavior, not following directions. We can work with the students regarding this, and we do. It's just, just because they have gum in their mouth doesn't mean they get rid of it. The teachers work with them, police spit out, you shouldn't be having it. We give them several reminders to support them in doing that. But if we would break this down for you, and we did, I didn't share it with you, but the fifth and sixth graders, we have zero food and gum violations at fifth and sixth. So that twenty-four point eighty-eight percent is strictly seventh and eighth grader.
And then the major problem behaviors, there's fifteen ways you could get a major. By far, our biggest reason students are receiving majors is for repeated minor referrals. So when you get three minors, the system notifies us. We go in, we look at the behaviors and turn it into a major. And then the second highest one at almost thirteen percent is defiance, disrespect, violation of building rules, inappropriate behavior language, and physical aggression. And I will say, I'm dealing with a lot less physical aggression this year than I was last year. So going over the rules and having teachers set those expectations, but it being consistent throughout the building is truly paying off. And here's a graph. So it's, it's easier for me to work with students when their majors are for repeated minors because I can show them it's these small things that you do that pile up, pile up, pile up. Let's start correcting the small behaviors and, you know, we'll see a decrease in your overall referrals to my office. But for the top ten students who have the most majors in school, and it's this year split pretty evenly between eighth and sixth grade, we have a meeting. I write in the behavior improvement plan every single referral that they've received, why they received it, when they received it, by and by who. And then we come up with a plan. So it's easy to see, okay, it seems like in math and science where you're receiving these referrals. What is it about that classroom or that, the way that class is, that makes it more difficult for you to follow the rules here at Giles? I've had very honest conversations with the students, and most of them were very like, yeah, I know, and this is what I can do better. So we put that on the behavior improvement plan. It was sent home, had to be signed by a parent and brought back to school. And I live with those students weekly to discuss how their behavior is going or if they receive a referral more than weekly, we reflect on that in my office. And just to make the students more aware of what they are doing and how it's affecting those around them. So the plan consists of the pattern of behaviors I just described, what it is about that they can identify that's causing them to act that way, what the alternative or desired behaviors are, what helps motivate them. Many of our eighth graders are motivated by the fun and creative activities at the end of the year. Many of our sixth graders are motivated by TBIS points or other rewards that they receive through school. And then lastly, what I and the staff can do to make sure that they feel supported and they feel successful.
This plan started over the summer. So Mrs. Aarons and myself, we called those ten families, we brought them in over the summer. We had conversation with them, we set up expectations. We, how can we help support you to create that environment? And I do want you to know that there are students that were of, that were causing some behavior issues last year that are not doing it this year, that have not gotten referrals. When I was signing certificates, the four-hundred-and-twenty-six certificates, I would be like, like just a question, just to make sure that this was accurate, and it truly was. So that's huge progress, and that's really something to celebrate. And that's why I wanted to share with you, we wanted to share with you, four-hundred-and-twenty-six.
And we both took the time to make sure your student got a hand-signed certificate from the two of us because it really is something to be proud of. And they're, the students are what make Giles the school it is, and we wanna celebrate those who continue to uphold the values.
We tell them every day that this is your school. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll just take a quick second. You know, we have the board, I wanna thank you guys for your effort. You know, when the board turned over the majority four years ago, it was one of, one of the goals at that time, you know, we heard about disciplining, we heard about maybe some, for lack of a better term, out-of-controlness, you know, especially with Giles. And this data shows that it, you know, when it was brought to us to add some more pieces and restructure and put, it goes to show, when you put people in right spots and let them do their job, like you guys both are, things change, and it shows in the numbers. So I appreciate it, the board appreciates it, and thank you for everything you've done to get it to this point, and keep going. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kusik, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you very much. As Dr. Shilly mentioned during the presentation, we do have two, two more resolutions on the agenda tonight. Working cash, and then we are also, we also have a resolution for money to the ed fund from all year. Do keep in mind that once money starts coming in, which we've received about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars so far in tax dollars, we do need to pay ourselves back too. So that is one of the things that happens right away. So that doesn't mean that the dollars coming in, that you necessarily want, you have to keep the cycle going. So we may come to you in January with that cycle continuing. We'll see how that happens. But currently, right now, we will, with the two resolutions tonight, we will be fine until the middle of January, with the first payroll in January coming. So we're very happy about that. The teachers and principals are working on possible e-learning snow days. With the weather changing now, we should have to be prepared if we need to flip to an e-learning day. Now, e-learning day is different than a remote learning day, even though they feel like they're the same. But an e-learning day is just a temporary day when we would flip to being online due to cold or due to excessive snow. So we are getting ready for that in case that is needed. I have been working with the area superintendents on what their plan is as well, so that we can all be in line when we need assistance. Couple of buildings and grounds, things I wanted to mention to you. The asbestos, we have additional asbestos removal. We went into the area down the hallway here at the school into a ceiling that was a permanent ceiling. We took down parts of that and realized there are twelve more elbows up there that we do have a roof. So tonight, we're asking for approval for that, and that will take place over winter break. Then we are starting a water pipe project, we're starting here at Lee, on the 23rd of December. And the preschool plans that you approved to go out to bid last month, we will be going out to bid at the end of this month. We had a little bit of trouble getting exacting the plans on where all the pipes are on your Lee facility. But we mitigated that issue, we're ready to go. Couple of grants to mention. I did hear from the state finally on the preschool for all brands. Dr. Aviola and I have a meeting set up with the state next week to get all those pieces into place. We are approved for thirty-four children, which is a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars. It wasn't what the total amount we asked for, but we're really happy to receive it, and we're hoping that that will continue to grow in the future. We would be starting this in February. So I don't know all the details yet, I'm sure I'll know more in January and we'll be able to share more with you. We also received the elementary and secondary digital technology grant, which was, allowed us to purchase fifteen additional Chromebooks. So four thousand four hundred dollars. We'll, we'll take whatever we can. So we're continuing to do the grants as we see them. We're waiting on two, possibly three, at the end of December, which we should be hearing about. One of them we're really excited about, and that allows us to have a five-year plan for additional mental health support in the buildings for five years, which will be great if we receive that. So we're really hoping that comes through. I'll let you know about that in January. Couple of policy things just to mention tonight. You have a first grade policy update one time. I gave a memo about that, and it was pretty extensive. I think it was multiple, multiple pages. Most of that policy is just updating legal reference. Nothing is really very substantial in policy. I did also give you a paper copy of eight colon three zero. It's a policy I'd like to put into discussion next month. This is on visitors to and conduct on school property. Quite frankly, as I find policies that are not up to what we are currently doing right now, I need to talk about them. So I'll be kind of bringing these random policies, you guys will be able to. But we'll talk about that in my discussion next month. And that's my report. Thank you.
Special report, Kimmy? Special education report, Mr. Masters?
Thank you very much. So as we have just finished up with our first trimester, we've actually had all of our special education staff, including related service professionals, send out goal updates. These were sent at the same time as report cards went out. So this is just basically to track each student's individual goals. They can have goals ranging from math, reading, writing, social, emotional, wellbeing, the lot. So we were able to provide all of that data to the parents and a little bit of qualitative information as well, just kind of giving some context to that. Similar vein is, as a result of sending out those goals, one of the things that we're doing as a department is bringing all of our teachers together to have what we're calling sped data dates. This is for us to basically go through and review each student individually and see, like, have they met their goals? If they haven't, what's our next step for that? We had a very successful first round with Giles, and we are actually looking to set up two days on December 19th and the 21st for Lee to review all of the data there. So far, it's been very successful. We've had many, many students who have passed most of their goals, if not all of their goals. And for those that we have Um, and for those that we have not, we've identified new strategies to move forward with them so that they are successful in the second trimester. Um, for our sped committee, we will actually be focusing on a meeting in December 20th on developing um, more of our special education department practices and procedures. Uh, we actually just recently added a new, um, individual, Jennifer Brown, to this committee. Um, we're very excited to have her perspective as a self-contained teacher in this lot. So it gives another wider variety of students that we can help serve. Um, last committee meeting, we were able to complete our department-wide handbook. And though it is not a perfect document, it is certainly a good one that we feel confident putting out for the rest of the department so that they can kind of have that as a guideline. Um, but our next big challenge will be to then create a sample IEP for a typical, I, I hesitate using that, um, most common that we see in the special education world, how we allocate our time and the types of resources. Uh, so that's just kind of helped to troubleshoot some things. Um, we've also continued working with our partnership, West Forty, with Holly McCarthy, who's our behavioral analyst. Uh, she has been very helpful for us. And actually, one of the things that I think we should be very proud of is the fact that, um, there is such a divide between what we can do as in a school-based setting versus a clinical setting. Um, one of the things that a B C B A would do in a clinical setting is actually trial a behavior intervention plan. Um, we don't typically do that in schools, but it was actually a big success that we actually have been able to help our team, uh, at various, various individuals in that team be able to implement a behavior plan to see if this will work for a child. So it's not just a, a quick fix. We are actually trying to see what will work for this child, but very successful with that, so very excited. And then lastly, um, I did want to say a major thank you to, um, Tanya Morgan, who was our virtual occupational therapist at the beginning of the year. Um, we are very excited to have Dr. Perry, Alexandra Perry, as our fully certified occupational therapist. Um, but as a result of that, we are going to, you know, say goodbye to Tanya Morgan. Um, Tanya finished her work with us on December 3rd, and we had a great dialogue as kind of an exits, um, where we wanted to kind of take a harder look at that sensory room evenly and readjust some of the, the way that we're structuring it. Um, we, Dr. Perry and I have been working to find some ways to kind of help use the licensed resources more appropriately so that the students, if they have more appropriate receptive needs or vestibular or whatever they may need, it's actually targeted for them. So it's a lot more, uh, specific to the child's needs. Um, and that is my report.
Questions in the board? Okay, thank you very much. Building principal reports, Dr. Abiola and Mr. Bieck, please Giles.
All right, so we are officially in trimester two. We had the progress reports that were emailed out on December 2nd for trimester one. And, uh, you know, we've also had a few, uh, different events going on. We had the, uh, the PTA had the Santa's workshop here, um, last week, which is always, uh, always exciting. Um, and Norwich Schools Foundation is currently running a Candy King Gram sale. And that's being, um, that will directly benefit the purchase of new stage risers here at Lee. So we're really excited for that. We hope that that, uh, does really well. That was, uh, a project that NSF had highlighted as something they wanted to work to, um, towards funding. So, uh, we hope that it is an extremely successful fundraiser and we greatly, you know, appreciate the partnership of both the PTA and NSF. Uh, also wanted to mention that, um, we've, along with the end of the trimester, we sent home attendance letters. So any student who missed 10% or more of the school year, which at this point, or at that point was six, uh, six days of school, received a letter reminding families of the importance of their attendance in school. So that, that does include excused absences. So, uh, we, we did receive a few phone calls when those were initially sent out with questions about that. But if they were at that 10% threshold, they did receive a letter. Now, uh, just a reminder that attendance does factor into our, you know, school report card. So it is something that we want to monitor. Uh, last year we had 17.3% of our students who were identified as chronically absent at the end of trimester one, where we currently have 21% of students, uh, chronically absent. So just want to, um, you know, put that out there as that's, that's something we're monitoring. We're trying to put some plans in place. At the same time, it's a kind of a challenging time because kids are getting sick, adults are getting sick, getting sick even, and it's, uh, seeming like, uh, the recovery time is taking longer on some of the, you know, common viruses like the cold and the flus that were, um, you know, typically you're out of school a couple of days and your back seems to be, um, kind of taking kids out for a little bit longer time from school currently. So that's something we're, we're keeping an eye on and we hope that that, uh, you know, starts to improve. And we have some, uh, plans in place for that. Uh, on November 30th, during the early release, that was our last committee day. So all the committees got together and put a little update for, from each of those committees, uh, in my report. But wanted to highlight, um, that we have a bunch of evening events coming up and we're really excited about those. I, um, listed them all out, but we have talent show, we have reading nights coming up, we have, uh, fine arts nights planned for the spring. Uh, we have an America night for third and fourth grade, kindergarten roundup, preschool celebration, all sorts of, uh, different events to, uh, you know, bring families in. And we're really excited about those. And, uh, those, um, will be added to the, uh, you know, calendar, we'll be sharing that out. And I did share some information in the weekly tracks, just kind of like, you know, save the dates. I think Mrs. Guzic did as well, because we want to make sure that we're spreading the word on those events early, so we get a good turnout. Um, so that concludes my report.
Thank you.
And then Giles, we have a great partnership with Ridgewood High School. We're always communicating with them over there, and they're very supportive of us over at, uh, at here at District Eight and at the middle school. But the month of, I'm really excited that the month of January, they're offering a program for fifth through eighth graders. It's a free program. It's, uh, it goes till about March. It's from 3:15 to 5 o'clock, includes a snack, but it's a site, it's a, um, a, a computer science program. And that goal of that computer science program is as students stay in that program throughout their fifth through eighth years and into their high school years, they can, they can graduate at the high school level with an, um, associate's degree and then go on to jobs that are being offered for $130,000 to $250,000. So it's really something that our, our students and families should take, um, but use as a benefit. Uh, currently 13 students from Giles have signed up for the program, and we're going to continue to communicate that out to our students to see if we can get even more to take advantage of that. And that is funded by a grant that Ridgewood High School received. Um, so we're excited that they're allowing us to participate in that as well. Uh, the month of, uh, January is a very busy month at Giles School. We have a lot of upcoming assessments taking place. Uh, before we go on winter break, we do have the SABERS and MI-SABERS, which is a, a mental health assessment that all of our students take and that our advisory teachers take for their advisory students to support them. That'll take place on December 19th. Uh, we do have our fifth grade takes a CBN fluency assessment, and that will be done, uh, that will be from January 9th through the 13th, and that takes place during academic strategies. And then our, our ELA teachers will be assessing the students in eye reading, reading. It's a diagnostic testing, and that'll take place January 9th through the 11th. And then our math department will be doing the IXL math diagnostic testing, and that'll take place January 11th through the 13th. The next two, uh, the math, uh, assessment, diagnostic assessments are very important because that data that we receive from these two assessments are tied to our school improvement plan. So we, uh, we want to continue to see growth in our school and we want to see growth within our school improvement plan. So we're really, we made adjustments based on last year's school improvement plan. So instead of doing 120 minutes, stop, stop, and everyone test, we're breaking it up in chunks because what we've learned is students do better in little chunks. So 45 minutes, we stop them. We pick up the very next day. We're encouraging families to get, to make sure their, uh, their children to get plenty of rest, eat a healthy breakfast when they get into school. Um, so we do that for one week. Will also typically takes about three days. So that'll take us Monday through, uh, Wednesday, and then we'll be focused on two days of makeups. And then, uh, last week, January 23rd through the 27th, uh, then we do the math diagnostic, same thing, 45 minutes, we stop. Now, this is especially important for our eighth graders because the data that we collect from our math, uh, ELA and math, that data is used to determine their schedule at Ridgewood High School. So it's very important, and our teachers communicate that. We, we don't want to make anyone nervous because you just have to do your very best. Getting plenty of rest, doing your best, not rushing or not guessing. You know, if you need a little mental break, take a few moments. It's not a timed test. It takes you a week, it takes you a week to get down, to get the test completed. But that determines for eighth graders, uh, their schedule at Ridgewood High School. Our athletic program, basketball cheerleading is off to a great start. I just came from the boys' home game today versus Mannheim. Both the eighth grade and the seventh grade teams won. Mannheim is a huge school, so that was very exciting for us to come up with a double victory. All of our schedules for athletics are posted on the Norwich School District Eight public calendar. And I'm not sure if Dr. Abiola mentioned this, but on December 22nd, it's an early release for both Giles and Lee. At Giles, the dismissal is at 1:20, and at Lee, the dismissal is at 1:10. Uh, we do have staffing, staffing evenings as well. We're excited that we get to bring them, uh, back, get our families back into our schools. Uh, so the sixth and seventh graders will be doing night at the museum. And fifth graders, uh, will be doing, uh, we'll be doing a fly-up, which is our fourth grade, our future fourth grade coming into fifth grade, will be a fly-up night so they can have a tour of Giles, speak to the staff, we do a nice presentation for them. Our eighth graders will be having an end of the year celebration. We do a little barbecue, celebrate their success and wish them the best as they continue on their educational journey. And then finally, all staff at Giles will be celebrating their eighth grade graduation. Always a great time to reflect. Um, students reflect, not only students, but staff reflects as well. So, uh, great way to end a school year, but these are some exciting things that'll be happening at Giles. And, and finally, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays. Thank you for all your support, and I wish you all a relaxing and enjoyable holiday vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, senior reports, Mrs. Carnell and Mrs. Aaronson, Lee and Giles.
We don't have any discipline reported, Lee.
At Giles, we had one suspension and violation of board policy seven colon one ninety-nine and twenty-one.
Mrs. Guzic, monthly staffing report.
We are moving along with an additional layer of apparel this evening and, and getting, um, never going to say again to that company being fully staffed, um, but we're working our way. We will also turn now at the end of December, January, and plan for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four? Seven?
Thank you, Mrs. Guzic. Board committees, uh, nothing other than what was already mentioned regarding board policy tonight. Going to the grounds.
Nothing that hasn't been covered in the last couple of months, so, you know, what was saying, Guzic, it was quite early.
Thank you, Frank. Communications? Finance?
No update.
Okay, nothing reported on negotiations. Education, parent teacher behavioral as needed, they have not been needed, there's no meetings of my knowledge, therefore nothing to report. Uh, Norwich Park, there will be no report tonight. Moving on to our consent agenda, I'd ask the board to consider a motion for approval on the consent agenda discussion. I will ask for that motion for the approval of consent agenda.
Oh.
Lou, second and by Frank. Anywhere you're ready, roll call.
Mr. Rizano?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Action X, I'd ask the board to consider approval of the 2022 tax levy resolution and certificate of the tax levy discussion. I will then ask for motions to approve the 2022 tax levy resolution and certificate of the tax levy. Second. Frank, second and by Maria. Roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Rizano?
Yes.
Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the resolution to levy 2022 taxes for certain purposes. Discussion. I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution to levy 2022 taxes for certain purposes. Motion. Frank, second and by Maria. Roll call, please.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala? Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
Mr. Rizano?
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the resolution to instruct the county clerk, excuse me, how to portion the 2022 tax levy extension reduction discussion. I need a motion to approve the resolution to instruct the county clerk how to portion 2022 tax levy extension reduction. Motion. Frank, second and by Maria. Roll call, please.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala? Mr. Rizano?
Yes.
Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of board policy five colon three three zero, update and adoption. Discussion. I'll ask for the motion to approve board policy five colon three three zero, update and adoption. Motion. Frank, second and by Maria. Roll call.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala? Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rizano?
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider approval of national school lunch program increase to Gourmet Norilla beginning January 9th of 2023. Any discussion? I will now ask for a motion to approve the national school lunch program increase to Gourmet Norilla beginning January 9th of 2023.
Motion.
Molly, second and by Maria. Roll call.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala? Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Rizano?
Yes.
Okay, carries. Moving on to our discussion items. Mrs. Guzic?
Tonight I'm giving you the proposed, uh, 2023, 24 calendar. The calendar, um, is in line with area superintends, area districts, especially Ridgewood. So three things, um, I want to point out, the beginning date, start of the year, the line of what we figure in, August 23rd of 2023, 180 student days, 176, I'm sorry, 180 teacher days, 176 student days, which is, uh, what we have currently. The winter break and the holidays are all, and spring break are all in line with Ridgewood. The end of the year would be June 5th of 2024. Next year, at this moment, we are not required to take any election days off. That may change, but as we're already. I did speak with, um, the Cook County Board of Elections to try to see if we had any options to move in the election out of Lee School. Unfortunately, we do not. Um, so that will, that will put a bit of a challenge, especially in the election that we have in April, with having students in the building and camp people coming in too. But we've always had a lot of success with our kids department supporting us a lot of days. So this is just a draft at this moment. Take a look at it and, uh, we'll bring it to you for, um, action next. Any questions? Moving forward, um, I am proposing just a draft of the curriculum fees and tuition fees for next year. I do, we do need to pass a tuition fee for kindergarten and preschool. Preschool in the event that we have over the amount of students, um, that we have for TSA and number one at preschool tuition money. Currently, right now, I am proposing a 20% increase on fees for next year. Looking back in the last two years of fees, two years ago, we decreased fees by 20%. Uh, last year we held steady and didn't increase them at all, kept them the same. This year, unfortunately, which is the cost of paper and the cost of the books and covering the curriculum, we, I am proposing a 20% increase. So for example, um, the first grade fee currently right now is 208. It would, 20% of you would be up to 249. That's on our low end of fees. The highest fee that we have is, um, eighth grade at 213, which would be up to 250. fifty-five. I am proposing just to add a small increase to the band fee from two twelve to two twenty. Would like to keep athletic steady at one thirty-five. We didn't, as you recall, in athletic development, we did increase the stipends for the coaches, so I think that we can sustain a one thirty-two next year. And then as far as tuition, tuition has been twenty-six hundred for preschool and kindergarten since we started the half-day programs, and I'm proposing a two hundred dollar increase to twenty-eight hundred. Still comparing to any other program around here is by far less than any other program, private school or even the preschool that's in our building. And then fees for kindergarten and preschool from one fifty to one eighty. Again, this is just being proposed right now, we'll take action on them next month. Any questions about that? Would like to get the fees approved somewhere in the later quarters, especially for kindergarten and preschool. And lastly, I last month mentioned to you in my report that we have received additional funds for Title One, and what I would like to do is attempt to find a reading and an act specialist for January through June, uh, using these extra funds that we received through the Title One grant. There are a couple of reasons why I think this is a good time to do it. I think that, that, that person can help support our Tier Three interventions, which right now, um, we, we have up and running at most schools, but Tier Three is mostly meaning after school, and that is students isn't able to attend after school for family reasons, and, you know, we're not able to do that with fidelity. Tier Two is up and running as well, and we did a lot of changes at Lee to make sure what, what we had, what had been happening when we were canceling interventions, when we had to pull stepped sub. Actually been doing pretty well with something right now, so I don't want to change that. I think we've been going well. So I think it's a good time to use this money that we were allocated to have someone come in who is a reading and math interventionist and help focus on our program. I'm not sure I would want that to continue next year. I think we have to look at the data, we have to see if it was effective, we have to see what, you know, what additional value for it. But I would like to post that position and bring that to you in January for approval as an action. Any questions? I think that is a very good one.
Thank you, Mrs. Guzic. Any more comments on anything? I'd ask the board to consider a motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss the appointment and compensation discipline forms for dismissal of specific employees and review the closed session minutes, the purchase of leased property for the use of the public body for meeting's help for the purposes of discussing whether a particular parcel should be required. Any discussion? I will now ask for a motion to adjourn the closed session for all the reasons I just mentioned. Seconded by Maria.
Mr. Mizano? Mrs. Lala? Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Caris, we're moved to time seven fifty-four. Uh, I'd say eight oh five, if that works. Ten minutes, eight in the closed session. All right, we're back and open the session at eight thirty-five P M. Personnel action items, employment. Consider the approval to hire Joanna Cox as district special ed career professional. Discussion? I'll ask for a motion to hire Joanna Cox as district special ed career professional. Motion. Lou, Maria. Roll call please.
All right, Mr. Mizano? Mrs. Lala? Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Okay, Caris, ask the board to consider the approval of the resignation of Dylan O'Shea, District Eighty maintenance. Discussion? I'll now ask for a motion to approve the resignation of Dylan O'Shea, District Eighty maintenance.
Motion.
Maria, seconded by Molly. Roll call please.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Flazo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mizano?
Caris, board meeting, your question time? I got it. So the board kind of words, I'll make it better.
Yeah, all the time.
In the meantime, I'll ask. In the meantime, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. The time is eight thirty-six P M. Motion. Motion made by Lou, seconded by Maria. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. If there's any opposed, say aye. All right, committee is now adjourned.